Good evening, welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin with our invocation from Pastor Hines, who will also lead us in our pledge of allegiance. If everyone would stand.
Good evening. Let's pray together. Our Father, we thank you, Lord, for this privilege of, Lord, another day you've given us. And Father, we begin tonight by lifting up this great nation. We pray for your leading and your hand to be upon all the things that are going on even now. And, Lord, here on the local level, we need you, Lord, to meet with us in this meeting, the things discussed, and, Lord, we pray that we would honor you and that you would give us a good meeting this night and lead us, guide us, and direct us, and we'll thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask Nicholas Ivey from Communications to come forward to present an award to our senior services department.
Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, we received an award, the chair received an A R C meeting, and it reads, it's from A A R P, and it reads, this is to certify that Henry County, Georgia, has committed to becoming more age-friendly under criteria established by A A R P and has been accepted as a member of the A A R P network of age-friendly states and communities, and the certificate is valid until June 2026. So, Chair, I believe we have Director Norris and his team here, if they can come forward and get a picture with the board, please.
Okay. Awesome. Commissioners, we're going to take a picture to the side. Next item that's on the agenda, presentation of applications received from agencies in response to the notice of funding availability for ARPA funds to provide subsistence payments and food bank services. We have our Cluster Lead, David Smith, to come forward to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County community. Please bear with me, there's going to be a slide in here that asks for questions, so I want to remind the Commissioners that I am presenting on behalf of Cluster Lead Shannon Chiseno, so I will attempt to answer those questions as best I can after the presentation. It's just a presentation. So this evening, I'm providing an update of the Department of Community Development in partnership with EMA, their use of approximately $1.1 million of ARPA funds. Community Development has programs that cover hotel motel vouchers, subsistence payments, food bank services, and veteran services. This slide talks to the obligation of about $400 million to assist the homeless persons and households with emergency sheltering for up to 60 days. So far, they've assisted five households, and approximately $10,000 has been expended to date. This is talking about subsistence payments and food bank. They've obligated $600,000 for subsistence payments, food bank services. A notice of funding availability was released in February and in March. Fourteen applications were received. They were reviewed, we have a third-party consultant, Prism, for our ARPA funds. They were then scored based on risk of low, moderate, and high. Staff intends to award funding of up to $100,000 to each of seven applications that met the criteria on a risk assessment of low to moderate, that's determining about risk. There were six agencies where we want to provide subsistence payments and one providing food bank services. We also issued a notice of funding availability released in May, and only one application was received for $150,000 in veteran services. This was solicited as a moderate risk. This slide talks to a summary of the agencies that we've reviewed with our third-party consultant, and they've been approved by the third-party consultant, and it's our intention to fund. This is a slide that I said, try not to have a lot of questions. I know that we're holding some funds back for EMA because they have a mental health initiative that they want to work on and/or a possible shelter. Earlier in the year, we also provided community development with approximately $800,000. They're separately using those dollars to assist with the George Street Apartments, and they developed a community resources application, and we've also used some funds, $10,000 for hotel motel vouchers. The other funding for ARPA is primarily for COVID-related cases. The funding, this $800,000, is for non-COVID-related cases.
Can you go back to the last slide, David?
Yes, ma'am. You'll see, we limited the amounts, even though some of the requests were greater than $100,000, but because of limited funding, we tried to limit those amounts to $100,000.
Thank you. Does any, Commissioners, have any questions? Commissioner Wilson, any questions? Commissioner Robinson? Commissioner Anglin?
Can you go back to the last slide? So, I'm noticing under Veteran Services, we have the Mighty Hero Home Foundation, a funding amount of $50,000.
Yes, sir.
So, the activity is veterans' transition from homelessness to stabilization. So, is this $50,000 that we're giving toward the project that was approved by the Board of Commissioners in their effort to raise money to do tiny homes?
This is actually additional assistance for the program, not necessarily tied to the funding that we provided earlier to help them with their program.
Okay.
Commissioner Wilson, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lewis, this initial information, it's my understanding from this thing, that this will be for them to provide vouchers for veterans that are currently in need of assistance, so it will not be utilized for the assistance that the county has provided for their future projects.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Price? Okay. Thank you, David.
Yes, ma'am.
Reappointment of Region Six Advisory Council for the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities, Ms. Bryant, to serve a term immediately till 7:23 27. I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment. Can I get a second? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. If we could have our county manager, Sherri Matthews, to please come forward and read our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, July 23rd at 6:30 PM. We have two items under the consent agenda. The first item is under Human Resources and Risk Management. We have a resolution accepting a grant award in the amount of $10,000 from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, ACCG, for safety items and efforts to reduce workers' compensation claims. And then, under T-SLOSS, we have a resolution approving a supplemental agreement for the State Route 81 widening project from Postmaster Drive to Bethany Road for the additional design work as required by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Moffett and Nickel Consultants provided a cost estimate in the amount of $165,210 for this supplemental agreement. Funds are available in the T-SLOSS account. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. We move to our regular agenda. This is annexation. The City of Stockbridge received a request for annexation of property located on Holloway Road.
Kenta. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is a property located at Holloway Road and Patrick Henry Parkway, that is the southeast corner of that intersection. The item before you is annexation requests submitted by the City of Stockbridge, just north of Racetrack at Jodico there, for a total of 2.62 plus or minus acres. The zoning for the subject properties, they are split-zoned between R3, I'm sorry, yes, R3, single-family residence, and C3, highway commercial, with the exception of Lot 4 there, that is completely R3. Future land use map designation for the subject properties, the first three there are high-density mixed-use, with that fourth property with that future land use map designation of high-density suburban. There is some zoning history with the subject properties, more specifically the first three properties that are split-zoned. Those were rezoned, split-zoned R3 and C3 back on January 3rd, 2017, with 11 conditions, that is RZ 1626. With that associated was a comprehensive plan amendment request, Comp Amendment 1607, from medium-density and high-density residential to commercial to support that rezoning request for that gas station. Again, that was back in 2017. This is a site plan that shows the area that is to be rezoned with that 2016 rezoning, 2017 rezoning. We see that gray area, that dark gray area, as the area to be rezoned, showing that split-zoned property. The City of Stockbridge received, or rather, sent over a request to annex unincorporated Henry County properties totaling that 2.62 plus or minus acres. That was received via certified mail on June 17th, 2024. The application, however, was deemed incomplete at that time, as legal description for the properties that were submitted referenced Octagon Road. The accuracy was difficult to verify, as there had been changes to the right-of-way for that road, which is now known as Patrick Henry Parkway. A copy of an updated legal description and survey was provided to staff on January 1st, 2024, via email, at which point the application was deemed complete. Included in the annexation application request was a rezoning request from County R3 and C3 to City of Stockbridge C3 Highway Commercial. However, on July 8th, 2024, staff received an updated letter of intent requesting City of Stockbridge C2 General Commercial. Included with that initial application was also a request to amend the comprehensive plan from its current designations of County Henry High Density Mixed Use and High Density Suburban to City High Density Mixed Use to support the rezoning request to C2 as amended. Keep in mind that parcel four, that right eastmost parcel, that does have that designation of high-density suburban. The rezoning request to C2 is not supported by that county flume designation of high-density suburban. With that, it is Planning and Zoning Staff's opinion that the annexation request would create a significant change in the surrounding land uses and future land use map designations for those properties. As such, staff would recommend objection.
So this is not a public hearing. Is there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Can I, like, to call for a motion to, staff is requesting a motion for objection on the grounds that the proposed change in zoning and land use and the infrastructure demands related to the proposed change in zoning and land use would result in a material increase in burden upon Henry County. So I need a motion to support staff's motion for objection.
This is actually in District 4, as a point of, this is in District 4, as a point of clarification.
Is District 4?
Yes. I think Commissioner Wilson had a comment.
He asked what district was it?
It's District 4.
So you say it's 4.
It is District 4.
Okay. I make a motion to go with staff's recommendation of not approving at this time.
Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussions, all in favor? Okay. Any objections?
I abstain.
You abstain? I abstain as well.
And, yeah. I have to say, I have a order pointing that it will be enacted by that decision.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is ULDC Amendment 24-01, an ordinance to amend Chapter 7 of the Unified Land Use Code. Kenta, are you presenting that as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good evening, once again, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is a request to change the ULDC Unified Land Development Code and how it regulates front yard fences. This item has come before the board a couple times now, just as a quick refresher. Chapter 7, Section 70204 of the ULDC provides code sections for fences, which would not currently allow for a front yard fence on a property located within a subdivision. It would, however, allow for a front yard fence for those properties zoned RA outside of a subdivision. It will require approval from the Architectural Review Committee, and that is today's code. The applicant has submitted an amendment to the original language of the requested ULDC change. For the most part, it does remain the same, but I will specify what is new as far as that updated language. What it boils down to is for lots within a subdivision, front yard fence may be permitted if the property does not gain access from the planted internal street. New criteria point, property shall be located within 1,000 feet of a signalized intersection. Fence is decorative in nature, matching the architectural style of the home. Fence may be solid and up to six feet in height. New criteria point, fence shall be located at least 40 feet from center line of the main road. And again, new criteria point here, HOA approval shall be required for those properties located within HOA communities. And two other points of criteria which are already in our code today, requests shall be reviewed and approved by Architectural Review Committee. Justification or hardship shall be provided with that request. So primarily, this would affect these lots located within subdivisions, not taking access on the internal street, such as the Spivey-Chase subdivision, with the added language of located within 1,000 feet of a signalized intersection. That would cut down, that would cut down the request allowable by our code to these three properties, rather than, and it would not allow for those westmost properties here. I lost that mouse. Staff has evaluated the amended languages proposed by the applicant. Staff does recommend changes to our code, a little bit different from the applicant's language as proposed. I would primarily be adding a section that is 70204, 70204C. Front yard fences shall meet the following standards: decorative in nature, meaning architectural style of the home; shall be located at least 40 feet from center line of the road; fences shall not be solid and shall not impede visibility; approval from HOA Association for those properties in HOA communities; and five, for residential properties located in a subdivision, not zoned RA. Front yard fence requests may be submitted if lots do not gain access from internal subdivision street, and that was part of the original amendment, and as part of staff's original recommendation. One other thing, Table E there, 70204E, that drops that max height down from six feet, as it's currently allowed, down to four feet, and that is also part of staff's recommendation. That is all that I have for you. Thank you so much. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
So I need a motion from the board. This is not, it's not a public hearing, we've already had a public hearing on this particular item. I need a motion from the board to either deny or accept the changes.
I make a motion to deny.
Okay. Got a motion to deny?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, I, I'm sorry, are those, any objections or extensions? She's, okay. No.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is impact fee schedule update. This is the second public hearing and the adoption of the ULDC Amendment-24-02. Resolution approving and adopting an updated impact fee schedule.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and the Henry County community. This evening, we will conduct a second of two impact fee public hearings. The impending action taken tonight will amend Section 8.06.00, development impact fees of the ULDC. As we did in the first public meeting, I will outline the brief history of Henry County impact fees, how funds can and cannot be spent, and how we arrived at the current fee structure. It had been 20 years since the inception of the impact fees for Henry County, and we wanted to add transportation as another land use to assist with the increase in truck traffic affecting our roads. To accomplish this goal, the impact fee program needed to be updated. On January 24th, 2020, Henry County solicited consultants for updating our impact fee program. We opened three bids, bid proposals, on February 20th, 2022, 2020, and eventually awarded the project to Bill Ross and Associates on June 16th, 2020. As part of the study, we met and solicited input from stakeholder organizations such as the Home Builders Association of Georgia, the Atlanta Apartment Association, and the Council of Quality Growth, to gain a perspective of the potential fee increase. Henry County staff recommended a fee increase from $1,661 to $6,800 to accommodate the increasing population growth of new residential and commercial construction. The study showed that for Henry County to maintain the basic level of service, impact fees should be $10,442, which we will see those slides here in a second. After meeting with the various organizations and hearing input, the public input, the B O C approved the Home Builders Association's recommended amount of $3,554, which was an inflationary increase of approximately 3% covering the past 20 years. So on August 2nd, 2022, the B O C adopted a new impact fee amount of $3,554 with a six-month grace period, and the new fees went into effect February 2nd, 2023. In preparation for tonight's meeting, we've received comments regarding the increase of the impact fees, and you will hear from those entities during the public hearing portion. These next slides show how the impact fees can be used for, like, parks and rec, have capital items, facilities, public safety, same thing, capital items, and transportation, things like resurfacing. This next slide actually shows how the fees have been used. In Parks and Rec, you can see there's about seven items there that have been completed. Public safety, we, that's vehicle purchases, and for transportation, funds are used for design for intersections. This slide here basically reads that fees cannot be used to pay for general operation or maintenance of facilities that are currently existing. Fees must be used in a district in which they are collected. This is, shows a comparison of the metro of, how Henry County compares to other cities in the area. And this slide shows how they compare to other counties in the area. This slide is the actual impact fee that we currently have, the $3,544, $36. This slide shows the 100% maximum that we can collect, the $10,442. The next slides you'll see will be alternates, alternatives. So here you have the $8,000 that we presented that staff recommended at the last meeting, and the numbers you see are the actual collections for each one of those categories. This slide here shows $7,000, and again, the numbers you see will be the actual collections. Here's a $6,200 option. And again, all of these line up with the alternatives or options that we had as part of the study. And this is the $5,600 option. So, again, staff is recommending the $8,000 option. The increase will be effective immediately. All fees shall be paid at the time of permit issuance, and building permits shall be submitted, or building permits submitted prior to the effect. And building permits should be submitted, or building permits submitted prior to the effective date are grandfathered under the current fee schedule, the thirty-five forty-four. And all other applications should not be grandfathered, including but not limited to the LEPs, SAPs, rezonings, and other trade permits. So the board asked to see how this would potentially affect residents if the builder passed the cost on to the, to the customer. As you can see right now, it costs the customer roughly a hundred and eighteen dollars a year on a thirty-year mortgage. Then the fees to the right, the eight thousand, seven, and six, and five, you see the breakdown there. Basically, eight thousand would cost two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars a year down to the one eighty-eight per year for the fifty-six hundred dollar option. And so the board asked also to show comparisons of the impact fees from where we were at the sixteen sixty-one, actually rounded the number up, but across the thirty-five forty-four. As you can see, I don't know if grossly was the right word, but we were kind of under collecting, if you will. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
So this is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the request will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board. Come on.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Zachary Quintero, and I'm a senior at Union Grove High School. I stand before you today as a proud resident of Henry County and as a young person deeply invested in the future of our community. I want to speak to you about the importance of implementing higher impact fees in our county. As many of you know, Henry County has been growing rapidly. Our population has increased by 1.84%, the second highest growth rate in the metro Atlanta area. Our beautiful landscapes, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong sense of community have attracted many new residents. This growth brings numerous opportunities, but it also presents significant challenges. Our schools are becoming overcrowded, our roads are more congested, and our public services are stretched thin. These issues affect all of us, but they will have the greatest impact on younger generations. The time to act is now, as these challenges are not going to disappear on their own. Impact fees are a solution that can help manage this growth responsibly. By requiring developers to contribute, to contribute to the cost of the additional public services their projects necessitate, we can ensure that our community's infrastructure keeps pace with its expansion. This means better schools, safer roads, more parks, and improved public safety services. Let's talk about our schools for a moment. As a high school senior, I've seen firsthand how overcrowded classrooms can hinder learning. More students means a more challenging environment for everyone. Impact fees can provide the necessary funds to build new schools and expand existing ones, ensuring that every student in Henry County has access to a quality education. Our roads are another critical issue. Increased traffic not only makes commuting a nightmare, but also raises the risks of accidents. Impact fees can be used to improve our transportation infrastructure, making our roads safer and more efficient for everyone. This is not just about convenience, it's about saving lives and reducing stress for all residents. Furthermore, impact fees can help preserve the quality of life that makes Henry County unique. By investing in parks, recreational facilities, and public spaces, we can create a healthier, happier community. These are places where families can spend time together, children can play, and everyone can enjoy the beauty of Henry County. Impact fees are not just about managing growth, they're about enhancing our lives and giving us hope for a better future. Some developers may have concerns about the potential economic impacts of these fees. They might argue that impact fees could increase the cost of new homes, making them less affordable and potentially slowing development. However, it's important to remember that the long-term benefits of impact fees far outweigh these concerns. Well-planned development, supported by adequate infrastructure, attracts businesses and residents alike. When developers invest in the, invest in the community through impact fees, they're contributing to the overall appeal of Henry County. Quality schools, safe roads, and beautiful parks make our country a desirable place to live, work, and play. This, in turn, can lead to higher property values and a more robust local economy, bringing hope for a brighter future for all of us. I understand these concerns, but I believe that the benefits of impact fees far outweigh the potential drawbacks. Another potential concern is that impact fees might place an economic burden on developers, potentially deterring them from investing in our community and leading to a slower rate development, or that they might pass the burden to the homebuyers. However, let's consider the financial strength of the top developers in Henry County. Century Communities, based in Colorado, not Georgia, had a net income of two hundred sixty million dollars in twenty twenty-three. That's after expenses. DRB Group, based in Maryland, not Georgia, reported a revenue of 1.85 billion. They don't publish their finances, so I didn't have access to their profits after expenses. Let's see, right here in Atlanta, Pult Group had a net income of 2.6 billion dollars. That's after expenses, that's the money they were taking and using as profits. These immense profits indicate that these developers have the financial capacity to contribute to the necessary infrastructure improvements without significant hardship or passing the burden to the homebuyers. Moreover, by investing in impact fees, developers could ensure that the communities they build are attractive and well-equipped, which can increase the value of their properties and attract more buyers. Additionally, without impact fees, the burden of funding necessary infrastructure improvement falls on existing residents through higher taxes. This is neither fair nor sustainable. By implementing impact fees, we ensure that those who benefit from new development also contribute to maintaining and improving our community, providing a sense of security and fairness for all. Impact fees distribute the cost of growth more equitably, ensuring that everyone, including developers and new residents, contributes to the infrastructure that supports our community. Impact fees are not just a financial tool. They're a commitment to responsible growth and a better future for all of us. As a young person looking ahead, I urge you to consider the long-term benefits of this investment. Let's ensure that Henry County remains a thriving, welcoming community for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak in favor? Next, we'll have, is there anyone here, is someone else coming to speak in favor? Well, come on up.
I don't have a speech. It's not going to be as nice as that young man's.
Stand in front of the microphone, ma'am, and tell us who you are.
Thank you. I'm just a citizen. I've lived here for forty-seven years, and I am-
What's your name?
Heather.
Okay.
Yes. I would say that my feelings as a citizen is that it is unfair to place the burden of all this growth on the taxpayers. I'm a member of a community website, and I'm not alone in the struggling with the high taxes. I'm lucky in that my family can't afford it, but I understand that there are others that this is really killing them financially, all the high taxes. And I understand that it can only really go up. So I live next door to a development being built. It's been being built for three years, and in three years, I've had to deal with all the construction noise, them dropping trees on my property. And it's been a loss of our enjoyment of our property. It's legal, they can do that, I get it, there's, I don't have any recourse, even if I could hire a lawyer to, you know, but whatever. But I am in favor of them contributing. It seems to me they are like locusts that move to a nice, plump area. They build all this shit and then they leave. And it is not fair to the people that currently live there to, you know, deal with having to build the infrastructure up to support all the growth. I didn't see anything in the slide about things like hospitals. I know that is another reoccurring theme that my fellow citizens aren't happy with, is that the one hospital that we do have access to that is closest is so overcrowded. And then you're talking about thousands of more citizens with nowhere to go for emergency health services and things like that. So that's just my concern with the rapid pace of growth, is that it seems out of control and that the developers are the ones that are really profiting. And that it is the current people that are really suffering. And that's it.
Thank you so much.
I know it's not very eloquent. I should have wrote a speech, but that really is just my feelings, is that they should help foot some of the financial burden and not just the citizens through taxation, because there are people who really can't afford it. And as the young man said, these home builders are making unbelievable profits. Don't cry to me that you don't have the money or that it's going to impact you, because I, no, I don't believe it. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Heather.
You have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, so next, Stephanie, if you could reset the clock. Those wishing to speak in opposition of the request likewise have a collective total of 10 minutes. Come on up, I know you're all here.
Thank you, Chair Harrell and Commissioners for your time today. My name is Granger Reeves, Policy Analyst at the Council for Quality Growth. The Council for Quality Growth is a not-for-profit trade association whose members share a vision for quality growth and development in metro Atlanta and in Henry County. In the 2020 to 2022 process of updating Henry County's impact fees, we were happy to share industry feedback on the proposal and provide recommendations. Now, in 2024, we again appreciate that opportunity. Sherry Hobson Matthews and Tucson Kirk, among other staff members, have long been great resources for our team and our members. Now to the impact fee proposal. The Council for Quality Growth has long recognized the role impact fees can play in maintaining strong infrastructure and adequate levels of service in a growing community. We consider impact fees to be a fair and useful tool and understand the county's need to update its current structure. At the same time, we ask that the new fees be established at an amount appropriate to the market and implemented in a way that does not create an unmitigable impact on vested projects, housing attainability, and overall economic development in the short and long run. The council and its members respectfully submit a letter with comments on the fee's rate of increase and recommendations for its implementation. The letter itself was sent to each of your emails, and I also have physical copies right here to hand out if you're, if desired. But in the interest of time, I'll pull out some highlights from the letter. First, we ask the board to consider the magnitude of the two impact fee increases combined in just two and a half years. As laid out in our letter, the staff's proposed increase is much higher than the cumulative inflation of construction costs since 2003. We are concerned about the effects on housing attainability in Henry County for developers who must now build housing elsewhere and for families that may become mortgage ineligible amid constraints to the community's housing supply. The concerns for retail and commercial are similar. Small businesses could arguably be affected the most. For instance, a 5,000-square-foot daycare would see their current impact fees rise from $12,000 to almost $29,000. And a comparably sized family restaurant would see their fees go from $32,000 to $76,000. An impact fee increase of this magnitude in such a short time has important implications for any community and deserves ample time for further due diligence, discussion, and working towards a balanced solution. Second, we encourage you to consider the following implementation recommendations for any significant amendments or increases to the fee structure. Number one, a six-month grace period and/or phased-in approach of one to two years, which would provide those already invested in the county more time to account for the increased expenses. And number two, a grandfathering clause under Henry County's current impact fee structure. There are more details on the letter for each recommendation. But that concludes my recommendations. The Council for Quality Growth and our members appreciate your consideration of these comments and recommendations. We stand ready as a resource for incentivizing quality development in Henry County. Again, my name is Granger Reeves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Got six minutes. Anybody else? You guys come up to the mic.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Ollie, I'm the project director for the Greater Atlanta Home Builders Association. It's been a while since I've seen y'all, and probably two years, I guess. So Greater Atlanta Home Builders Association is a not-for-profit trade association made up of 1,200 company members. Yes, while some are publicly traded, many live, work, and have businesses within Henry County. Within that, our associate members provide services, including mortgage brokers, pest control companies, et cetera. So just, I'll be very brief, just a couple of things. This morning, we were, our council sent a letter to the Council for the Board of Commissioners pertaining to this as a request to halt charging the fees while we are in current litigation over the methodology report and how we got to this point. We are clearly in disagreement and would ask that you respect our request. In addition to that, you know, as it pertains to the workforce housing initiatives and all of the stuff that we hear from our local municipalities and counties within our footprint, the easiest way to achieve attainable and affordable housing is to remove government regulation and government fees. That's kind of step one. So I would encourage the board to find other ways to accomplish their goals and initiatives as it pertains to these services. So again, our request to this Board of Commissioners respectfully is to halt charging the fees as we are in continued litigation for, I guess, around a year now. So if you have any questions, we happen to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come to the mic, please. State your name and who you're with.
My, this one.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Derek Jacobs, and I'm not, we're anybody, I'm a resident of Henry County. We own five acres here in Henry County. Now, forgive me, I had to step out for a second to give my daughter to her mother. I, this is what, I wasn't here, I was here mainly about the millage increase, and I saw something about the impact fees. One of the things I wanted to speak on, we actually have five acres and we're looking to build a house on it. And of course, when we were talking with zoning, I'm not sure, I missed the presentation, so I'm not sure exactly what, you know, they were saying about the impact. I think it was mainly concerning, you know, like corporate or builders and stuff like that. But as an individual looking to build a property, we have to pay impact fees too, you know, serving as a general contractor. I remember seeing that on the paperwork that they were giving us. So my thing is, I'm not going to hold your time, but just like with the millage rate, I'm against any increase because right now times are hard, people, money is tight. Even people talk about how, how much corporations make, and they should be responsible. Everybody should pay their fair share, but we have to be considerate. The corporations pay the employees, they pay us, we guys pay you with our taxes. So any increase in taxes negatively affects everybody. So this is something we have, you know, there are costs. Excuse me, cost increase happened with inflation, your, your cost increases, our cost increases. But we, you know, we, we can't just say, well, tax them and not tax us. So we have to really look at the amount of money. We have to, you know, to me, if you're, no disrespect to anybody on the board, we have to look at, it's always easy to spend other people's money. It's always easy to say, these people should pay more and we should pay less. But we want to make sure, you know, we have to look at the circumstances and the reality. But we want to make sure, you know, we have to look at the circumstances and the reality. These costs for like regular citizens, even us trying to build our own home, we're not rich, you know, it, we have to pay, everybody has to pay. So naturally, everyone is going to be concerned about any increase. So we have, I think these are things we really have to look at. How does it really affect people? Not just be indifferent, or they're just a regular person, he's not a lawyer, they don't have the money we have because it does matter. It matters in how we vote, it matters in how we see our representatives. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? You've got one minute and 50 seconds.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. My name's Clifton Harrison. I'm the President of Life Built Homes, ACC Construction Group, and Five Oaks Communities. I live and build here in this community, and I have a concern with the substantial increase in the impact fees for lots of reasons. As our rep with the HBA said, we're under current litigation as to how some of these numbers have even arrived to where they are. We're focused, hyper-focused on trying to get costs down right now for, to make housing more affordable for families. As we all know, we were going through a severe inflation increase. We've had continued increases, and although permitting is down and although demand is down, we're still seeing increases throughout our industry, and it's making things more and more difficult to make ends meet and to meet customers' needs. Right now, with the current interest rates, we're at about $75,000 by my closest estimate, overpriced in the market. We need interest rates to come down about a half point on a $566,000 transaction, which is our average in this county. That'll bring us down to be able to, to make our houses more affordable for people. That's kind of our average net where we see people are falling short. An $8,000 or any increase, sorry, not $8,000, but $4,000-plus dollar increase right now would be devastating and is at the wrong time. So I would ask that if there is any increase, to allow us to back up and maybe implement that over a few-year period as opposed to an immediate. Thank you.
Thank you. Toussaint?
Come back, please.
Can you put the options back up there for the Commissioners to see? No.
Which ones?
The slide that has the different options. The $8,000, the $7,000, I need that slide.
Yeah, this is it. So this, this is the $8,000 one here.
No, no. I need the slide that has all three of them listed.
All right.
Yeah, leave it right there.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson.
So in a current impact fee distribution, we have, and of course, you had it broke down, but I just want to clarify, the, the top, the top receiver of impact fees is Parks and Recs at $1,054 under our current collections. And then we have fire protection. They say, no, the road improvements are top, it's 1378, then our Parks and Recs, number two. Then we have fire protection, it's number three. Under this new proposal, go back to where fire and PD, where are they going to be plugged in? Are they going to be number two and three, or are they going to be, how are they going to be receiving the funds?
I guess that would depend on which one is chosen. Here's a $7,000 option, and...
That puts them at 45%?
Yeah, so the fee would be $405 for fire EMS.
So, so look at...
$8,000, it'd be at 630, so they're, they're still coming in third, if you will.
So Parks and Recs is 3120 and fires at 630.
Yep.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
And then where is PD, is it three? I guess my question is, if, if fire and PD is, is needing funding for equipment and further improving the capital, that's what we heard through this budgeting process, we should be looking at having them at the top three?
Okay, you could do that, but if you look at the, the 100% across the board, that's the max dollar amount you can charge in any category. So fire EMS, the max they could receive would be $901, and...
You're saying that's all they can receive?
Correct, at 100%.
Is that per the, the way it's written?
Yes.
Or can that be changed?
No, so, so the consultant said that the max allow was $10,444, right? So this is at 100% for each category. So each category, that's the top number.
But who come up with them numbers?
The consultant.
So, so can we go back and change those? I mean, the DCA can approve to get these changed, these numbers changed? Could we submit to get that 911 from fire changed?
So if you're trying to change that, to me, we require an entirely different study. Because this is based off of what he provided us in '22, or 20, we have 2022.
Okay, I'm going to move on to my next question. So some of these fees are collected as a countywide fee, and some of them are collected for districts, correct?
So all the funds go to each district's bucket?
Well, I don't have a jail in my district, so the Sheriff's Department fee, I don't get that in my district, correct?
But you, people from your district go to the jail? Maybe, possibly? People from your district possibly go to the jail?
Yeah, but this, it's countywide, though. All the impact fees go to, go to the Sheriff's Department. Don't go to my district, goes to the Sheriff's Department, right?
Okay.
And we have animal control, that goes to, not to my district, but it goes to the animal control, correct?
Okay.
So that's a countywide collection, correct?
So if the structure's built inside of a specific district, so that money would be collected inside the district's bucket, so then at that point, the funds are spent however it is needed for animal control and/or the jail.
But if I'm collecting it in District 1, but it's going to animal control, because I don't have a shelter in my district.
Okay.
So it's a countywide collection, correct?
Okay.
Is that...
County manager, can you help us out, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand what we're saying here.
Please come forward. Can you put the chart going back across of all the different categories or areas that we, that the impact fees can be utilized for? These are the only things that we can utilize impact fees for. It costs to provide services in all of these categories, especially public safety. Anything dealing with public safety, it costs. And so, or we could lay police off and, you know, not have anyone answer 911. I mean, you know, it costs, as the county continues to grow, it costs to provide these services. And if you're going to build in the county, then you need to be able to pay that cost. It costs to widen the roads, resurface the roads, and all of that, and then you want parks in your community. So either you want us to fund these services or you don't. Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson, and finish your question.
So what I'm trying to do is get the difference between a countywide collection that goes to like, all districts' monies go to the Sheriff's Department, because we have one Sheriff's Department in this district. They don't have a Sheriff's Department in different districts. And we have every, every impact fee collected for the animal shelter goes to the animal shelter, correct?
That is correct.
All right, so, so in police and fire, those collections, are they countywide? They go under the police, under the EMS and fire? When we collect those in an impact fee in a district, does it go countywide?
So impact fees are collected, and the district in which they're collected, that's where the improvement will occur. To your point, because you and I have had several conversations about specifically fire services, so the districts in which those impact fees are collected, that's where you expand that level of service. That does not mean that an ambulance or a fire truck from outside of that district will not run in your district, because it will provide a service if they're not able to cover it. So an example, like the jail and the animal shelter, because we only have one facility, that is where all the funds would go. Now, because we are collecting impact fees, if we have a need to build another animal shelter, then we can expand it or build a new one with impact fees. And because it is countywide, it can be built within those districts in which we've collected, because your study's going to tell you what your needs are. So that, that's what the difference is. So to answer your question, every use up there is countywide. The point is where it's actually constructed, or where that service is expanded.
So how can we collect a fire protection impact fee and let it be applied countywide? How can we change that if that's the current, under the current agreement?
So that's not the way the impact fee law is written. You have to expand the funds in which, the district in which they're collected. And so you're meeting the intent, that if, if you're saying, I have a fire call in District 1, and we have a fire truck that's responding, and I'll just use the one off of Mount Cornwall Road for, for sake of conversation, because District 5 is probably one of the districts that, from an impact fee standpoint, has the most development that's occurring. So based on our impact fee study, the fees that are collected, if we needed to build a new fire station within District 5, that fire station could be built. But if we get a call and those engines are out in your particular district, the engine from District 5 can run in your district. That, there is nothing against that. And so the impact fees are being utilized for the purpose in which they're being collected, but they have to remain within that district.
So when we paid off the public safety complex, how do we use the impact fees for that? Where did the impact fees come from?
The impact fees that were collected?
Yes. How did we, how did we make the payments on that fire safety complex? Wouldn't they pay down with the impact fees?
Because we paid off the debt, yes, sir.
But where'd the impact fees come? Just from that district?
No, sir, they came countywide, because that facility is a countywide facility. It's not just for...
But it was police and fire?
Correct.
So couldn't we use any police and fire facility countywide and use the impact fees, like the training ground, the training tower? That's a countywide, couldn't we use the fire impact fees to pay for that?
So if the training facility is going to be located in the district in which those impact fees were collected, then yes. But we cannot take the impact fees from District 5 and build something in District 1 if those fees were not collected within that district.
You said we took the fire impact fees to pay for the, the police and fire's public safety complex?
No, sir, I said we paid off debt.
Okay.
For our countywide project.
Okay, so if we create debt with the training tower, we can pay the debt off with the impact fees then?
But we're, we're not doing that. That's, that's not what we're doing. We're, we're building a fire tower in, in a district that's not collecting the impact fees. You can't, and if you'll recall, I think you may have been on the board, because previously our board was not implementing impact fees in the manner in which we needed to. We brought a resolution back to the board because impact fees were being used in every district. That is against the law. The whole point of impact fees is if you see an increase in development and growth within a particular area and you have to expand a level of service, then the impact fees are used to expand that level of service. I don't think it's fair to say, and I hate to keep saying District 5, but that's what's most on my mind in terms of development, that because there's a plethora of growth in District 5 from building permits, that I can take those funds and build a fire station in District 1? Because that's not where the growth is. You're supposed to be building services where you see the growth. So it wouldn't make sense for me to build a fire station. When you talk about the police and fire building, that is an administrative office. And so they are not providing, they're not running calls from that building. That is the administrative building. That's not a fire station, that's not a police precinct. And so they're providing administrative services there.
Okay, we're not going to agree on this.
No, sir.
To the next question.
And it's okay.
So currently, how many cities are involved in collecting impact fees for the county?
What do you mean, cities involved?
A city. How many, how many cities are, are part of the S, Special Service District collecting impact fees on the schedule right here?
So special service districts and impact fees are different, and so...
Well, they have to be, they have to be part of the, they have to be part of the impact fee collection, so that would be a...
No, sir.
So how do we get the cities to collect the impact fees for the county within the city limits?
So I, I can't speak to what the cities are collecting in terms of impact fees.
They can't collect our fire impact fees throughout the city because they don't have a fire department? We can't get them to collect our fire impact fees?
No, sir. No, sir. The city, the cities operate under their own fee structure. So the city of Locust Grove cannot collect an impact fee for the county for fire services. Now, we can enter into a memorandum of understanding or an IGA where we will, and it's typically done through our SDS. So in our service delivery strategy, there is current language that requires all of our cities to provide a percentage of their impact fees for parks and recreational capital projects. But that was done through the SDS. And so if there's a desire for fire, then that needs to be handled through our service delivery strategy.
Okay, what, because the reason I ask, because in the last two years, there's been like 3 million square feet of industrial buildings built in Locust Grove in the city limits of. And if we had an agreement with them to collect our fire impact fees, that would equate to a pretty good paycheck.
You said if we?
If we had, if we had the agreement, yes.
Well, that's certainly something that if this board wants me to revisit SDS, that we can consider, because you are right. There is a lot of development that's going along those corridors that are within the city limits, and we are providing fire services for those cities.
So it has to be through SDS and IGA?
So service delivery strategy would need to be amended to now include an intergovernmental agreement that outlines that a certain percentage of their impact fees that are collected would be returned to the county for capital projects, because we've got to be specific that it's for those capital expenses.
Yeah, I think the city would go along, because what it would do would provide a tax relief for the city, with the citizen within the city as well. So I don't see why they shouldn't help us collecting those fees within our agreement.
And, and it would certainly be on the city to provide that information, because the county would have no knowledge of what they've collected and the number of impact fees they've collected, because that information doesn't come through our office. So we would have to depend on the city to tell us the number of building permits they've issued and what they've collected with those impact fees.
Well, I'm pretty sure you all work that out.
Absolutely.
Yes. Well, thank you, that's all I have.
No problem.
Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. That was a lot of good information. I hope everyone received that.
But I'm also pigging back on what the chair stated. We've got a lot of growth here in Henry County, and, you know, to the developers, you guys are building leaps and bounds here. We're no longer the old Henry County. So we've got to make sure that we are receiving, so that way we can make sure that we have our road infrastructure, because when you're building, we're having to fix the roads. And we're trying to figure out where we're going to get the monies from and all of that. So our citizens are coming to us stating why we can't get out of our subdivisions. So I just want you all to know that, you know, it's been a long time coming, but we're here now. And if we're going to be community partners to make sure that Henry County is a great place to live, work, and play, then we're going to need all players in the game to make sure that we have that here in Henry County. So I just want to say that, because there was a comment that, you know, we as elected officials, we're spending other people's money, but I just want everybody to know, we live here as well, and this is our money, and we want to make sure that we let everyone know that we are you, and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by our, our entire community here in Henry County. So that was just my comment, Chair.
Commissioner Anglin.
Hey, I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make. First, though, whether you agree or disagree with the young man that spoke earlier, you did an excellent job.
Excellent job.
So thank you. Thank you, everybody's listening. You did a very good job. So thank you. Union Grove's in District 3, by the way.
Yeah, I knew you said that.
So with that, some points of clarification that I want to make sure. First... First, as we look at the chart, the money doesn't go to hospitals. It doesn't go to the schools. I just want to make sure that's clarified in some presentations we've had. Previous 20 years, we did not have an impact fee increase. I think we need to be aware of that, that for 20 years, there was no increase. And two years ago, correct, we did increase it to $3,500 essentially. With that being said, that this is not a tax offset. I want to make sure that's very clear. This is a impact fee, not a top tax offset, and nor is this a tax itself. With that being said, I don't see how this would also provide, as some may have mentioned, a tax relief. So, I just want all those things to be clear as we're moving forward. Thanks, staff. Thank you for all those that did speak. I appreciate y'all so much.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah. Good evening. I also want to congratulate, I think Mr. Quintero, that was an excellent job. Sounds like he needs an internship with the county.
He's already hired.
Yeah. Okay. But I actually had several comments. So, you know, I want to speak specifically to the gentleman, I forgot your name, but you brought up some very, very great points about the effects of individual home builders and what that would do for you if you're trying to build a house yourself. So, we do take that into consideration. I do want to talk about, I know the Greater Home Builders Association accounts for quality growth. You talked about workforce housing and not passing costs along to the homeowner. I just want to point out, like during the height of the pandemic, the cost of lumber went up tremendously, and those costs were passed on to the homeowners. Since that time, it spiked in May 2021. Since that time, the price of lumber has dropped 75%. I haven't seen a 75% decrease in homeowners' costs. Cost of lumber is 30% of building a house. I haven't seen the decrease to the homeowners that correlates to that drop in lumber prices. So, to say that we want to save homeowners' money and we want to make it affordable for people to buy houses, at some point, you will have to take that upon yourselves to make sure that it's attainable for the homeowner as well and pass along any savings that you may have along to the homeowners. Going back to the part about money going to the district in which it's impacted, that's just logical. If 1,000 homes are built in District Five, that's where the impact is. That's where the money goes. If there's no growth in a particular district, then what are we going to take money from District Five to go pay for that non-growth? That makes no sense. And so, we're not going to do that. But just going forward, we want to make sure that areas that are impacted, we have high growth in District Five. We need to make sure that roads are taken care of. Prior to last year, transportation was not even a part of the impact fee, which is insane to me. With all the growth that Henry has experienced in the last 20 to 25 years, we didn't get transportation impact fees from impact fees. That made absolutely no sense. So, at this point, the major complaint I get from a lot of residents is about the roads and potholes, and we're doing our best to make sure there were added money to transportation costs. But part of that needs to be borne if we are going to build more houses and we're going to have more development in an area, then there needs to be a correlation with the amount of impact fees that are paid. So, I do understand that in the end, we don't want to burden new homeowners with additional costs. But we also have to understand that new residents that come into the county, they are impacting the county and the level of services provided. And we have to make sure that there is a direct correlation between the impact that they bring and how much money we bring in to make sure that we, our roads are good, to make sure that we have the parks in good condition, to make sure that all these services that we provide, we are able to provide. So, I don't think it's any secret that we need higher impact fees. The level of prices that we pay for everything has gone up tremendously. We had an aquatic center that was originally $22 million that ended up being $52 million. So, to say that we can keep impact fees at the same pricing structure as 20 years ago, that makes absolutely no sense. Because you know who's going to bear that cost? The taxpayer. And we're not going to pass costs along to our current residents, our current taxpayers. That is what we're not going to do. So, those are my comments, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Parks.
I too want to commend the young man for his presentation and speaking clearly. Certainly, he had done his homework, and so, thank you for the information that you shared. When we think about impact fees, it simply does what it says. It helps the impact to our community. So many people who are moving in, who are making the roads more congested because of that. Again, I think that we need to have our developers to help offset some of that. Working on the paving crew, I understand that, you know, more traffic means that, you know, the roads perhaps have to be built different to be able to maintain or hold the traffic that's on them. And so, again, I know we oftentimes do not like increases, but, you know, we've got to kind of get with the times to be able to help our community. One of the things the young man said that I believe is so true, that a lot of, you know, the developers do not live in our community. They build, they sell, they make their money, and then we're left to pick up the pieces. And so, if I had my way, they wouldn't even be able to pass that cost off to the homeowners. Because if you want to do business in Henry County, I think you should also be invested or committed to investing in our county as well and not just, you know, how I feel, taking the money and run. And so, again, we have a wonderful place to live, so many people that want to live here, and we should not also be expected again to pick up the broken pieces. So, thank you for those comments. And to the young man again, great job.
All right. So, Tucson, if you could put the, go to the next slide. You got the slide that's the $7,085. So, that gets us to 100% for road improvements and police protection?
Yes, ma'am.
And 73% to parks and rec. What does the 8,000 do? And then what's the 10,000? That would get us to 100% in all categories?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So, I need a motion from the board on the proposed fee.
I'd like to make a motion that we raise the proposed to $7,085.90 to be effective immediately.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Wilson.
I was looking for the $8,000 or the 10 because we're so far behind on all these categories, and we eventually going to have to make up the difference of the impact out of the general fund. So, that's why, that's why I'm at.
Got a motion on the floor?
Got a motion on the floor and got a second. All in favor of the $7,085 proposed increase in impact fees? Can I show our hands? Okay. And those opposed? So, can you read to me? I don't have a copy of the resolution. So, does this talk about when this goes into effect and all of that stuff?
It does.
Do you have that? Stephanie, do you have a copy of that? Because I want to make sure that commissioners have a full understanding of what they just passed or what we just passed.
So, Chair, the way we wrote the resolution, the impact fees would go into effect effective immediately, so starting tomorrow. Any building permit that's submitted with the date stamped to July 2020, July 24 of 2024 will get the new impact fee rated at $7,085.90.
Okay. Anything else in there?
I'm sorry.
Anything else?
Also, it talks about the grandfather clause, which we stated earlier. Basically, any building permit that was submitted July 23rd and before would still be at the 3544 rate.
Okay.
Okay.
So, any building permit that was already submitted?
Correct.
Prior to?
Today.
Today?
Correct. Just building permits.
Still be at the 35?
44.
44.
Yes, as approved.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Can you place it on the overhead so we can see all the changes? Because there are a couple of things that we need to make sure that we reemphasize. When we speak to the building permit piece of it, that's not a zoning application, so go into all those details for me.
This is more, can you? No, I don't want that. So, this speaks to it a little bit clearer.
That's not the one we recommend. Well, that's what y'all recommended.
Well, that's what we recommended, but as far as the, what goes in the resolution, all fees will be paid at the time of permit issuance. That will be one. As of right now, you can pay before the CO is issued. Again, building permits submitted prior to the effective date of grandfather under the 3544. And all other applications shall not be grandfathered, including but not limited to LDPs, rezonings. So, we're not including rezoning applications, LDPs. We're only talking about home plans, house plans that were submitted prior to July 23.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? I need to get approval of the minutes for June 11th and June 27th. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to second. All in favor? Okay. Our next coming, upcoming meetings, July 30th is a BLC meeting, mileage rate, public hearing, and adoption. August 6th, a regular scheduled board meeting. I need a motion for us to convene to executive session to discuss property acquisition.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? We will now go into executive session. We will now go into executive session.
Can I get a motion to reconvene from executive session? Motion second.
Okay. You got that, Stephanie? All in favor? Approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to the executive session. Can I get a motion?
Motion second.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.